We are starting the meeting, welcome everyone to the June 25th meeting.
Please be quiet, starting the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Ken Swan, the Vice Chair of the Newbury Park Committee for Deals, we're running this evening meeting. We'll start off by taking attendance. Mr. Deloitte?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Shagun?
Here.
And we are expecting Ms. Scott. You do have five, so we have the one, these are our five voting members. And the first matter of business. We usually handle continuations first, so anybody who came for those could leave it quick. So we have two hearings that are coming up that folks have asked to be delayed. I believe both of them until second meeting in July. So is anybody here on 26 Beacon who would like to say anything, or should we just see? So would somebody here like to make a motion to continue 26 Beacon to?
July 23rd.
July 23rd.
Make that motion.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? Law?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Shagun?
Yes.
Mr. Junda?
Yes.
Yes. The item is delayed, I should have indicated by the way that also with us tonight is our City Planner. Caitlin Sullivan and our notaker, Gretchen. Alright, we have one continuation which is for A. Jefferson Court. This also will be requested to continue until July 23rd. Is there anybody who would like to say anything about that? Would anybody like to make a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue Jefferson Court until July 23rd, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
And second? All in favor, Mr. Deloitte?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
Mr. Shagun?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I vote yes. I think it's continued. Alright. The next thing we have on our agenda is a request for a minor modification, 28 Spofford Street. Is there someone here to describe that? And if you could state your name and address? The podium, or notaker, and for anybody who might be out there, then this is a hybrid meeting, somebody might be watching remotely as well.
Oh, good evening, Scott Brown, architect up here tonight. Jim and Kristen Farrell, the 28 Spofford Street. And we're here with a minor modification request for condition of a board this board in 2014 with a request for special permit. At that time, the project was about trying to sort of make the house accessible for a child. That project in 2014 included an elevator and a ramp. And all of those additions are located to the north of the property in the 7th. We did receive the special permit. Project was constructed according to plan, and here 10 years later, we're simply asking to add something to that. And since that special permit comes with the property, we didn't need to come back. So up on the screen, this is our proposed site plan. Those sort of dark shaded areas to the north of the main box, those are all of our 2014 additions. And immediately to the left of that, with a couple of notes there at the immediate rear of the property, that's what we're proposing to do today. And again, it's a simply asking to cover an existing outdoor patio and add a second deck. Next slide, please. So these are two elevations, we've got an existing elevation on the top and our proposed elevation on the bottom. It's a rather long house. So on the top, which is the existing elevation, sort of the middle third, that represents all that 2014 work, which we received a special permit. And on the bottom, which is our proposed elevation, all the way to the right, that is where we are proposing to do our work today. Again, it's an existing outdoor area that we want to add. Next slide, please. Couple more elevations. Immediately on the right, this is how you would see it, with some garages. On the top, that's our existing elevation, you'll see, which you'll see in a minute when I show you the existing photos, there's an existing second floor deck there, which is in a partial state of demolition. So one of the goals of this project is to replace that deck and also make it accessible at the same time. That deck was never accessible. In the lower left-hand corner, this is our rear elevation, you know, way off to the left, those are our 2014 additions. And again, this is simply sort of covering, some color of the existing area. Next slide, please. Just some photos of what this looks like today, again, you can see that sort of existing second floor deck, which is partial state of demolition, the intent is to replace that. Yeah, upper left-hand corner. It's at, you know, 2014 work, you can see the ramp and the end floor. So, you know, what we're proposing to do is, he means all setbacks, it's a rep large lobby, no lot of issues. You know, if it wasn't for that 2014 special permit, you know, we would not need any of this. So with that, yeah.
Okay, does anybody on the board have a question?
I'll ask one question. Caitlin, could you go to the side? So Mr. Brown, everything is it's not, it won't be visible at all. Is that right?
No, not visible. Pretty front back there, some of the properties, you'd be able to see this, but you'd not be able to see this.
Just want, just want to understand, so there is no, you're not expecting? That's correct.
Everyone, can you go to slide two, more down? Can you describe, it looks like the railing is tapered on the second floor, I think you're trying to show something different there, is that?
Yeah, so this is just like partial, like metal roofed, it's improved in the corners, so this second floor deck is actually built into the roof. You know, so what you're seeing there, lower right-hand corner. It's like those vertical, like vertical boustiers are going to sort of terminate into this.
Okay. So it's flat roofed in the deck section, and the roof is tapered up?
Yeah, it's in part, design is in part, you know, it's trying to couple those two things, wanting to try to create a sense of privacy. We also want sort of like this metal, metal weight.
Great, so thank you, thanks, Chair. Any other questions? So we're here for to decide basically whether this rises to the level of requiring a hearing, or whether this is just a minor modification, or we can just say yes to the decision. So how many members on the board? Does anybody like to comment?
Go ahead. Well, it's no new, not conforming, it's no such, not existing now. A stark, the lady, it wouldn't mean, exactly, it would need any I view this as a minor modification.
Does anybody else want to chime in?
Yeah, sure, I agree, I think that this is a minor modification and should be treated as
They don't need to go through. Can I just ask, so if it were not needed a minor modification, they would have to actually submit and have a public hearing?
Yes.
To see if all of them, yeah. Alright, with that, I'm looking for a motion, whether this is a minor modification.
I would move that the minor modification, MM 24, in for street be approved and then board approved.
For a second?
Second.
Alright. You can go right to vote unless somebody wants to, you need to help them say. Alright. Deloitte?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Shagun?
Yes.
Do all six people vote on a minor modification? Well, since even though Lynn is her turn to vote, you're able to, you don't have to vote on this.
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well, so it's true, but not. But my modification passes. I kind of glued it to that, it's, we take turns with the two associate members, and it's Lynn's turn to vote, so you'd be voting. Anticipating all the conversation, but oh, we should go to the outskirts. Alright, that gets us to our public hearings, we've already continued the first to 10, the Motley Jane, Car Island Builders.
Good evening, my name is Pat Don, with Car Island Builders, representing the Nalu family at Temple Valley Lane. This project is to go up a story on an existing garage that is non-conformant. Garage construction was original to the house back in 1995. Assuming some zoning changes happened since then. The plan is to add a master suite above the existing two-car garage, increasing the structure height roughly seven feet from in height than existing. No building footprint increase. No increase in non-conformity. That's a picture of the house as it sits today. And I think next is just existing conditions. And then this is the most new construction with the second level above the garage. Lot coverage isn't changing. No increase in setback, non-conformities. I guess I'll open up the question.
Okay, I should have perhaps said at the beginning, the process for a public hearing, you give a presentation, which we appreciate. And then we throw open to anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment. And we'll see if I may remind them like to do that, then we'll take questions from the board. So is there, is there anybody here who would like to comment upon this application? Seeing no hands, is there anybody out there in the area? Defend these two. And no, if you're out there and you want to say something, you push the raise your hand button. And nobody had raised their hand. So we will then move on to questions from the board. About six more members, but just who would like to be here?
Just a couple, how large is the additions?
The addition is 400 square feet.
And is it inset on either? The front inset on the main house, it will
The garage front wall is not changing in, in a row.
Is the issue straight up from there?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. What else has questions? If you have one, Mr. Shagun. On the zoning matrix, it's four bedrooms, four bedrooms, that's done. What happens to the other bedroom in the main house?
So we need to pass through a better one in order to get to the new master suite, so it'll become hallway.
See, it'll lose a bedroom to create a new primary.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
One of the things we've been satisfied is that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do you have any thoughts about how the increased size will fit into the existing neighborhood?
Well, Valley Lane, it looks like we're not the first to go up a story on the garage. Again, it's a 30-year-old neighborhood, so some two-car garages that were with the, you know, increased some living space. I think the architect did a nice job. Keep the classic of the you know, the home and the neighborhood. All the exterior finishes are max the original, it's nothing, nothing crazy, no contemporary, we're you know, modern finishes.
And haven't talked to any of the neighbors or the butters?
The customers? Doesn't seem to be any pushback, they have good relations with the peers, so it sounds like it's a you know, like it's like in here.
Thank you.
Anybody else? For my own, myself. I recognize the road. It can be inserted in, I guess that's more the way. Deliberate comments on this whole business. So that gets us to deliberations, I'm sorry, I can't be done there. Who would like to start deliberations, remember please, for the minutes, we're trying to establish a two-prong test of whether there's a new non-conformity with this, and whether it's more detrimental to the neighborhood than it's current pre-existing non-conforming state.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so in looking at the area, there's no new form here, and as far as being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I don't think this project that's presented would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's a nice design, it looks like it'll fit in well to the surrounding house, so I can, I can support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will Deloitte's comment.
Thank you. I have to agree, and I think the addition actually put outside of this. Honest. And as the presenter stated, driving around the neighborhood, there are several in this area. Addition over the garage, some of the houses don't have a second story, it's all over the place in this area. So I think it does fit in. Over time, and it's like this point. Yeah? Yeah?
I would have nothing further to add, and I would
Mr. Junda?
I support the application.
Yeah, I think my colleagues. I too can support the reasons they stated. So with that, we'll move to a vote, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the special permit for these for Temple Valley Lane.
Alright. Move to the second. Hi?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Shagun?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Well, it's me. Yes, so it passes unanimously by. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, that gets us to hearing, which is for 15 Perry Road. David Jambos?
They, oh, I'm here with my wife, we are the owners of 15 Perry Road. Been in the house for five years, now looking to add an addition on. Next slide. So reason for the special permit, the non-conformities, destruction, disrupt an additional more than 500 square feet for non-conforming addition. Next slide. So the stove will work into an addition of 17 by 25 addition in the back of the house, that would include a new kitchen with access to a patio. And in full height basement with a master suite on the second floor. Next slide. Just, these are just existing pictures from the house, so from the front elevation, this addition, you wouldn't see it from the house, we're not removing any landscaping or tree on the left. Next slide. This is the back house, so double windows up. It is, that's what the addition would be. Next slide. So from this side, the house is where you would see the addition. Next slide. And then from the west elevation of the driveway. Nothing would be changing in this. Next slide. This is a plot plan of our property, I'm showing our butters, the highlighted area is the proposed addition. Next slide. Neighbors listed, the offices spoken to. What seems to have to move forward with it? And these are the, this would be the proposed for the addition, so no problem. Obviously, the trees aren't there, but that's, that's it. Next slide. This is from the back of the house. This is from the east elevation. Next slide. And then this is from the west elevation where the place is. While we were working with our architect, we were mindful to make sure that the new addition flowed into the old addition, so we're matching the same cedar shakes. The windows that own the color of the house will all stay the same, so it's important to us to make sure that it blended in and just looked like the the house. We're also mindful, just with the means of the roof on the back end, being lower than the means of the original roof of the house. I have I know I sent the plan to the inside, I don't know, I've got this, I'll look at the inside, I don't think it's more important to just capture kind of what we're doing on the house. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, in the public hearing, the next thing that happens is anybody who would like to make a comment? Raise their hand and or ask to ask a question. Is there anybody here who would like to make? Alright, seeing none, I'm online with the two folks, if you would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand, push the raise my hand button. We'll see it here. Okay, no? Alright, so that gets us to questions from the board. So who on the board would like to begin with the first?
Just a couple, I'm trying to find in your application, can you give me what the open space and lot coverage numbers are before and after this, you know, those numbers?
I believe it's, it's on this matrix here.
Yes. We're going from well, okay. Just wanted to confirm that, I was looking at the front elevation. This is just an observation. There's, there's no window or?
Not, not a mess. Just with the way the design is with the burst on the burst floor, the stairs going down to the basement, and on the second floor, then addition is a closet, so why?
And I just want to, you advise that free of building, free of your letting neighbors?
Yes, yes, yeah, next to us is a condo. Gentlemen, and then the neighbors to the right of us, and then behind us as well.
Okay, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Would like to, but everyone, can you go to the slide with the east elevation, it's yeah. Can you describe the roof line change between the main house and the addition?
Yeah, this was, this was just
Is that really going to happen?
No. The, it was just the rendering, the new addition tied into the existing pitch of the back of that roof in time, so you won't have that little area that looks like it's going to trap water. So that will want the same pitch for water.
Okay. Yeah. That would be important for substance.
Yes.
Have no other questions, Chair? Alright. Who would like to go next, or perhaps you want to make questions?
Well, well, Mr. Junda? Well, we see that new drawing with like
That's an excellent question. And typically, when you have a plan approved, plans are captured, you're fooled.
Yeah.
And you have to build it, what you say you're going to. So if you're going to build something different than this. Caitlin, could you correct me if I'm wrong, would it behoove them to submit a, between the plans?
And then, then you need to submit a design that
Okay. Yeah.
So given that, you know, they want to continue to make a meeting and submit a design in a revised fashion. Your, what you're, you know, actually what it's going to be. You could make it a question.
We could approve it subject to the planning office, with a new plan, right? If we chose.
You should.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to hold the pot, I'm just, I'm not voting on this, but if I was, I would be comfortable not comfortable with not seeing the actual plan, final plan, but if the planning office is comfortable with, you'll get the plan. And I think we're okay.
Particularly if we had language that the roof would be horse huffle point rather than sloped, they would pin it down.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with you in general, you don't want significant changes, but that seems to be something you could describe in a phrase.
Correct, that's significant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that roof is going to, that roof is going to tie into the existing. So I can I can have an updated draft, and just hold it back. Which is all from
I guess I have a relating question.
Go ahead.
It looks like the plans were prepared by a designer, not a tech, is that relevant to the final plans are going to look like, this looks like the contractor has responsibility for making sure what is actually built needs coverage.
Yeah.
I just haven't seen this before.
You know, we sometimes approve plans that are kind of hand-drawn by the app, so it's, but
We see plans, you know, drawn by, you know but they change, I guess, as a result of changes, the contractor makes the same. If they change the plans, then they would most likely, you know, submit or might add a modification. Thank you.
Do anything else?
On the, on the left-hand side where the addition will be, are those trees going to remain there, or the stuff, or?
Yes.
I'm just a little curious about sort of windowless mass of
Yeah, that large tree that's captured in the existing picture, we're not modifying it at all. So from the street, that, that side is very much covered.
Yeah, okay, and then the, the new addition goes behind the
Okay, and and the the new addition goes behind the the little box, the one-story box.
Correct. Thank you.
Um, you you know, um. I can tell one or two questions. How many, we may have said it, I missed it. How how many square feet is this addition?
Um, twelve seventy.
That includes the two floors?
That includes um the basement and then the first and second floors, like one hundred twenty-five square feet on the first floor. It's a second floor, three times.
Um. And uh. Yeah, what's kind of funny, I also, when I look at that drawing. It's. It. I have the same reaction to a couple of my colleagues to like sending pictures. And it's um. I'm I I would not insist on a window. But if I were you. And I wanted to have a house that had, you know, good recent value down the road. So you know, you can think of a certain apartment. It's uh. It's going into a closet.
It's going into a closet and first floor. Literally where the stairs are going down, we have a window on the side that's gonna buy natural light.
Yeah, but if you were moving that one to the front, it just would break up this big mass.
We we played around with it, the challenge we have is putting, putting a window on that elevation, we put a window in the closet which we gave away.
Yeah, like space.
Kind of the.
I do, and like I said, we're not in charge of windows here, so I'm not insisting. I'm just saying as a homeowner. It's, I didn't put a fake window from the street. Just have the shutters closed like you do on small houses and it's like, oh, okay. Uh, I think architecturally it was a little bit, but that's like I said, that's just my opinion. It's not a formal opinion in. Public voting board. We we tend to think in terms of it was the mass inappropriate with the neighborhood and the the butters and jack. So I don't have. So that takes us to deliberations. Each of us can comment upon. Whether this meets the two-pronged criteria. Special permit. And whether we can support. Who'd like to begin that analysis? I can start.
Yeah.
You know, I think in general, uh, two-pronged analysis, is there new non-conforming now? Is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? So the first thing that I would look at is scale of massing. It can be seen on the side of the house, so it is. Is big, I think, to everyone to catch point that there's no window, it makes it look bigger. Makes it look like a turret. You know, Cinderella should be in there or something. It's big. But I don't think it's. Because more detrimental to the neighborhood even even, it's not my taste. I think though, drawing being submitted with a change in roof line is quite. Natural, something's gotta be done now. I'm actually stunned anyone would draw it like that. Because it's. Hopefully known whatever building. It is, it's a nice damn heavens. Wow, what a mess. Uh, so I don't know what to do with that. I guess we could. If we're trying to propose accepting the application. Someone's gotta see new set of drawings with the roof line changes. Removing that. Jock, whatever you want. Uh, so with that said, if if we can find a way to get the roof line change. As part of the application submitted, I I would be in support of the application. Thank you. Next.
Yeah, uh. Addition and. It has been lost. Basement. What's the? I wonder. Sufficiency here. Uh. I find that. Sway is particularly better. And otherwise, I. Neighbors.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I would agree with Mr. Bennet. I think the support of the neighbors is is critical considering that we're. Talking about this, the windowless mass, um, so if the neighborhood is okay with that, then I suppose it's not gonna be substantially more detrimental. To the neighborhood. And this, the the scale and the massing, while it might be, you know, larger, so. It's relative to the house. Seems okay. So. I can support this. I think we just need to figure out if we want to do the uh. With the, the actual plan itself. If we want it, so. The addition. Whether we want to see the revised plan.
Okay, thank you. Um. When the word?
I don't have much further to add, but I but I agree. I think that. If there's runoff from that into the neighbor's house, that could be detrimental and so. Be important to make sure. To make sure that it's not more detrimental substantially to me.
Warren?
Could I see the uh original? House as it exists now with. Front-facing. It it seems to me like, um. And and again, it's your home. I'm not the taste police at that. It it seems to me like small, like roof lines and the white outline is sort of what breaks up your house. And I I wonder why they haven't used those sort of accidents. To break up the mass of that tower somehow. Just to, to even, even something in the center to break up the floors would. Make it so it doesn't look like one big mass. You know, you can't do a window, but there are things you could do to decorate it, if you will, to make it look like it's not. Giant power. My my two cents. Um. Just from from seeing it from the street, I think there are things you most certainly could do with it to break it up with. Without a window. The window doesn't seem to make sense planned. But there there are definitely things you could do, but. Your neighbors are in support of it, so I, you know, I would support your application. I don't think this is detrimental to your neighborhood at all. Uh, you don't have any new non-conformities. It but it looks fine. Um, you are gonna have to deal with the roof line issue and the new plan. Aren't you, you anticipate that? Um, and then the only other thing is. How to make that mass, sort of break that mass in.
Well, thank you, um. Yeah, I agree with many of the comments here. Um, it it. Hate to slow you down, but. I like some of my colleagues' wall and pump a lot of ways. Could you put up the side view of the drawing? I mean, if we could just describe. What, what the roof's gonna look like, it would help a lot. So, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think really, yeah.
It slopes down between the two structures. It would, does it simply go straight across?
Yes, so that. Above the addition, that roof line, that roof will go over that pitch that's not. The existing roof, because the back of the house right now is what's coming. So in the wood shop plans that my contractor is working on, that it will show the way that the. The new addition ties into the existing roof that.
But but we were to say in our decision that where it goes straight across the the big part of the house. Well, dips down, instead if you just go straight across to the old part, to the new part of the house, is that what it's doing?
I think the the way the pitch would tie in and then what they got is that. It's first of all.
Yeah, I I guess I, even though I hate to hold you up, yes, yeah. Of course, we have somebody from the audience who would like to make a comment.
Rear elevation photo.
Name an address, please.
We speak uh thirty thirteen Purchase Street, over there. So here's the back elevation.
Yeah.
So now you can see where the new addition is going and the slope group is on the left. Uh, the left two-story, so the new addition is going on the right.
Right.
And so it's a, it's a.
So that left side is that, I think that picture that we're seeing is is showing that roof that has the snow guard.
Yeah.
And not, and not the addition that you see the window on the right. That's. Where that new roof will tie in, right? So it's just showing through.
The drawing is incorrect. But you can see how it would fit, right?
Well, the drawing simply shows the roof bucket in the back.
It it's showing it through that, yeah, and you know, maybe that's not always supposed to be, but for the addition with how it's tying into that section of the roof. We'll be able to maintain that pitch because the roof will be lower than than what we.
Yeah, to maintain which pitch? The pitch of the roof on the left?
On the right.
On the right.
The main house.
Yes, the 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 side on the left is not being touched, it's not being altered in.
It. Yes. Um. So is the lower level with the small roof below it with the double window?
That's being done.
In the bulk.
That's being, yes.
August, so is this new addition basically attaching to the end of the roof line? So that roof line is just gonna extend.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Your drawings don't show that very well, but. If that bottom part is really coming off and the addition's going there, your roof's. Could I know you?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, the cycle line should show that. If you put the cycle.
Yeah, so that that section. On the, it's hard to point to, but you can see the existing part that that has pitched roof. Right? That's not being touched at all. No. Yes, that, that you're looking at that, that's the cut through that is a little bit confusing in that point. But this shows we, you know, it will be tied in.
It it shows a two-story addition on top of the bulk. And it shows another rectangle between. It's colored in beige between the two-story addition and the existing house. What is that?
That's that's part, that's part of the addition.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the end of the exterior wall that's gonna be a hallway leading to the master.
And the, and the roof on that. I find it is confusing.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, that, that. Small rectangle would have to be taller than the existing house for the roof lines.
But the drawing doesn't show that. I don't know, I'm getting less comfortable. Yes.
Terms of having a plan.
Oh, I mean, the, I I have a plan in the inside.
Well, let me, I made my question. When you, when can you have before either the the planning officer or zoning board revise the plan with chip?
It probably have, put in a day, two days, so I'm I'm just hoping that. While we work through that, just to clarify that we can move on. With the job, we're we're moving out of the house. Expecting in September and to be back in my Christmas. Waiting a whole another month is really gonna hurt us. Oh, I understand the concern. The drawing is work. You know, the way of into the roof that answer any questions or or concerns.
Perhaps a good word is that. It's conditioned upon having a drawing that. Does not create any drainage issues. They brought in. Um. Just thinking how to word this thing. Just gonna put the onus on. Can you guys read drawings?
Whatever they face in it, uh, let's see. Happen to us.
Cause I think. The other thing you might see happen is that additions room might have to go up. So can intersect. In which case they'd have to come back anyway with a minor modification and that'll slow you down even more. Um. I'm thinking to make this correct, it's gonna be more than. Someone with a pencil pulling the roof. So, if you really could get a revised drawing soon to us, could we look at this at the beginning of our next meeting? Bring this, I think for two weeks, right? Then two weeks. It could be a two-week delay, not a month. I realize we have the topic. I believe this is a long conversation. Since we've already talked about it. If everyone was happy with the roof line. Everybody's happy with all the other mysterious roof line. Sense I'm getting here. Yeah. Yeah. So I can go pretty quickly in the next meeting. I can certainly go for a vote tonight. Then you're out two years. Yeah. And you need four out of five votes. Would you support, we continued it for two weeks, so if you could get the drawings to us, we could re- re.
Yeah, I mean. It's my hands are kind of tied, so I'm I'm swaying to the start of conversations very soon. Uh. And you know, in that time, being able to. To get those drawings before branding starts, we feel comfortable with with that pitch.
And if the applicant was supported, I would. Close the. Continue this to the next meeting. I put it in the docket. Guessing it wouldn't take long. How do other people feel?
See two head nods down the.
Yeah, I mean, I'll ask. I'm not. I mean, is it? It's zoning, I'm sure office. Prepare well.
Continue to get the proper ground. And I'm a son, this is the administrator. You want?
Sounds pretty good, Alan. No, we feel bad. We hate to slow the speed of folks down. And you know, taking this for your neighbors and for the animals, um, but I think. I think we had the descriptions, so I think we can do it at the beginning of the next agenda and then do it very quickly. We do need to see a drawing. She afterwards. But that way we accomplish this is we have to officially continue this hearing to our next meeting. So we're gonna pick it up, look at the drawing. So two weeks. And yes, it's the, what day is it? The ninth? July ninth, yes. So I need a motion to continue this to July ninth. I make the motion to continue fifteen. See twenty. To our July ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Okay, to move and second it, um. Yes, as well, Mr. Nada? Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And if it's continued. Thank you. Pick it up very soon. Alright, the next one is um eighty-nine High Street and ninety-one High Street. David Keery and Keery Design. This is one house. Two numbers basically and one owner, so. But what we need to do, I think it's okay for us. Sentation to look at. But when we get to voting, we need to vote. Officers communicated to me. Could you please introduce yourself and?
I'm David Keery, Keery Design, representing the owners Mark Sendron and Jennifer. You hear me alright? Um. The properties are eighty-nine and ninety-one on High Street. And uh each of they needed half-house, um, so uh we're here for. Um, altering, extending a non-conforming structure. Being that it has a zero block line, um, because of the. A line running down through the property, which is, um, very quickly on the um, my map. Um. You can see these, the High Street runs diagonally up the street, um. Page left, right, and. Page left, right, and State Street is running at about one o'clock in the, in the other direction. And the property is eighty-nine and ninety-one, this is eighty-nine on my map. Ninety-one, uh, which you'll see is right next to it. Um, going to the site plan, you can see this is a long lot. Um, the bottom of the page is High Street and, um, as you can see is divided right in half, longitudinal, it's federal. Big Federals, it sits on Hill, uh, on that side of High Street. And has a, a two-story addition behind it. And then behind that, there are two one-story additions, one of which on the left, on the eighty-nine side is a, um, mudroom and on the right side, a mudroom and screen porch of ninety-one Street. So, um, a recap, run through kind of the, um, the zoning issues, um, that apply to the, it's in the High Street Residential District. Um, uh, current use of the, the land is, uh, one-story. Excuse me, residential, one family remains so. Um, um, existing structures non-conforming with the requirements of zoning ordinance for the district, uh, in several ways. Uh, does not conform to the lot area requirement of sixty thousand, uh, square feet. Um, it's currently, uh, nineteen, nineteen-six seventy-one feet and will remain same. Uh, doesn't conform to the frontage requirement of a hundred, thirty-eight point six. Uh, does not conform to the front setback, seventy-five feet, forty-four point two, uh, and, uh, remains so. Doesn't conform to the rear setback, three hundred feet in this district. Uh, it's currently one ninety-one point four, it changed slightly on the eighty-nines to one eighty-nine point two. Does not conform to the side setback. Five feet for the district, it's currently zero. One side and will remain so. And it also does not conform to the B-side setback, twenty-five feet. There it's twenty-three point seven, remains twenty-three point seven. On that side is similar, on the other side, it's a different number on the ninety-one. The number is, uh, twenty-three point one, so, um, but the, the main house is the reason for that, the additions are actually inferred, that they, they actually do in terms of the sense. Um. So, uh, uh, the once, proposed one-story renovation addition, uh, will extend both sides setbacks of the zero, uh, foot, and it will slightly intensify the existing rear set of, of the one ninety-one. To again, one eighty-nine and two. Um. And finally, the, what we think of the proposed one-story, you know, operation addition to back the main house will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood, in our opinion. The existing structure, as it will match the scale, material, character of the existing, uh, addition. Uh, will occupy roughly the same area, uh, that the existing structures occupy at the rear of main dwelling. And it will not be visi- uh, visible on High Street and will block no more light air of the, of the existing, of the adjacent properties uh, than the existing structures do. Uh, going on from here, we have some photos, leave next. Uh, just, this is quickly the High Street neighborhood where it is, a little tough to see, but uh, they're in the, uh, down the street from what was the mobile gas station, uh, between there and the customs house, uh, excuse me, the, um, crushing house. And, uh, on the opposite side from the crushing house. Um, so the top right picture is looking toward the crushing house back toward town, our is on the left. Um, the bottom right picture is across the street from it looking, it's actually, it's tough to see, it's beyond the, um, the White House on the right. Uh, the bottom left picture is coming from, uh, the Bartlett Mall. Going toward Tender Grove, on the right is, and it's behind that White House, uh, and, and, um, the tree that you can see there, so. Kind of not this really, as you're, as you're driving by, um, we have the next. Um, so this is the house itself, and on the right side. Uh, top right, you can see eighty-nine, um, on the left, ninety-one is on the right. Bottom right picture shows side of, side of ninety-one, as you can see, there's a there's basically a divide down the middle, um, the rear of the from the ninety-one side is the bottom center picture. Um, and the, uh, bottom left is kind of dead center of both. Uh, you can see the existing screen porch that we would like to basically renovate, uh, it's, it's getting, it's coming out another couple, uh, couple of feet of what, what exists now, and, um, we'll show you pictures of, of the new plans for that in a moment. Um, finally, up, uh, top left and middle top show the eighty-nine side, again, there's a mudroom structure there that that is kind of, uh, seen better days, it's, uh, needs a little insulation, et cetera, um, and, and foundation. So, um, my clients would like to just, uh, have a place that they're actually going to use, uh, some of the same, uh, most of the same windows and doors and, um, um, have them re-glazed, et cetera, the new, the new addition. And this has gone through the historic commission in, in the past. Our next slide. So from the standpoint of our drawings, we have, um, someone has painted the house purple, all I wasn't looking. But, uh, on the left side, we have the, the screen porch, that's ninety-one clouded in the top left drawing, on the right, you can see the mudroom. Going to be demolished and replaced. Um, on, on the top right picture, that's looking at it on the side, the eighty-nine side. And the bottom picture shows, uh, looking at it from ninety-one's. That you can see the screen porch that we're proposing to replace. And the next slide, please. And finally, uh, these are the drawings, uh, for the addition. Uh, top left is the screen porch on the left side. We're connecting these two with, as you can see, the triple window in the middle. And on the right side, popping out the same structure, um, pretty much the same as it was for the mudroom on the eighty-nines. Slight, slight increase there. Um, uh, the bottom left shows, excuse me, the bottom picture shows the ninety-one's, again, mudroom and a new screen porch. Um, with a little more architectural detail there, um, we plaid the wall with nice stone and, and added columns to the corner, which pick up columns, some of the columns are on the side of that house on ninety-one. And, um, finally, our top right shows the new mudroom, um, the screen porch is beyond that. And then our last slide, please, is just a rendering of the addition. So existing, you can see on the left, and, and the proposed is pretty similar to what exists, we hope, but a little bit nicer. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much, um. Now we get to public comment. Is there anybody in the room here who would like to? Anyone? Alright, saying none, is there anybody online? Uh, you can make a comment by pressing the raise my hand button. See the hands. So, that gets us to questions on the board. So who would like to begin with questions on the board?
I, I just have a few. Can we look at the zoning matrix? See last, actually. Can you tell me what? Let's start at eighty-nine High Street. You tell, tell me what non-conformities are being increased.
On eighty-nine, rear setback is being slightly increased. Rear setback for this district is three hundred feet. Um, so they are increasing that by about, about two thirty.
I think that's ninety-one.
Okay, goes from one ninety-one to one eighty-nine.
Alright, yeah. That's the only.
Yes, that's the right increase, uh, uh, block coverage does increase a little bit. Uh, both are still within the, um.
How about ninety-one?
Uh, ninety-one, it's only the lock coverage. Increases that.
The rear changes definitely, it was seventy-one, it's gonna be sixty-eight.
Uh, it, uh.
Three feet. Welcome to the.
I just wanted to give you some. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Shagun. I noticed there was one of butter. This is to the right, but this ground, the nicotine takes their support. But I also noticed twenty-six of butters to this house, it has to be the max in the city. Um, you know, are there any other neighbors in support of those twenty-six, uh, of the nicotine?
You are, I feel.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's, as you said, it's quite a small minor change to the back of it. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Over here, any?
I have one, could you tell us a little bit about the historic commission process? Dealt with and their supporter, they didn't have any issue with?
Yeah, they voted for unanimously, I think they liked the fact that they were keeping the same scale. That they were using some of the same windows, original windows. Um, felt that it was a pretty synthetic treatment and probably because it was back of the house as well, you know. They didn't have any objections.
Thank you.
Also. So that gets us to deliberations, uh, we deliberate whether it needs the two contests. This is when we have to, uh, or at least when we can give a vote, I guess we can deliberate as a group, but we're gonna do vote, so. So who would like to start?
Start. Uh, I see that there are no new non-conformity being created by this project. Respect to both eighty-nine High Street and ninety-one Street. Uh, and with respect to whether or not the project would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think, uh, based on the fact that it's in the rear of the building and it's basically just a little bit larger than, than what exists currently, I don't think that there's any meaning this would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is that I am in support of this project in respect to both eighty-nine High Street and ninety-one Street.
Thank you. Um. Who would like to weigh in next?
Uh, just following up on those comments. This is an important house, the addition is tasteful. Yeah. All makes sense, demands in minor increase.
Next. After group, my colleagues, tasteful addition, no new conformity. Certain detrimental to the neighborhood, support.
I, I incur with everyone, I, I, I live in the Naples, but I live just down the street, um, in another another whole big home on the bridge, and I, I think this you wouldn't see it from the, uh, from, and I know, I know your neighbor. She, she, she's been before many times, and if she's happy, then
Um, I, I support this. When, when you see the picture of old and proposed, it looks very, very similar to what was originally there. Use some of the original pieces if you will. A great job, this is a nice addition to this.
And, and I too can support this, I was gonna mention the, you can take this later. They well mentioned, um, it's that all same, this is a supportive letter from her. Think of them as a record, but, um, anyway, it's very it's a lot of it relative to the house, I don't think you're gonna see it from the street. Uh, it's very, uh, according to said, it's very beautiful house, a beautiful set. It's important, it seems, although it does intensify it kind of, the, uh, little three hundred foot also one ninety-one, one eighty-nine. Generally, I'm not favorite, but it's, uh, they're not very nice. But that, all these deliberations and we're looking for a motion. Now, only by looking for a motion for one of these, no, motion back.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-conformities for eighty-nine High Street.
Thank you, is there a second? Alright, uh. See who's in favor.
Yes.
Yes. I am too. I've never admitted that's me and another.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for you.
Awesome.
In a second, um. Alright, uh, see who's in favor.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Shagun, yes.
Yes.
I thought, yes. I also provide my firm. Passed it, very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. Alright, uh, gets us to the next and last public hearing. Twenty-six Johnson, Elizabeth Johnson, Karen is named Nina Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Lisa Mead, me, Tom, and Costa, thirty-three, three, three, three. Uh, here on behalf of Tim and Elizabeth Johnson, and, and this here with me this evening, Elizabeth Scott, father. Um, and Eileen Graff, who's the architect on the project, and my colleague, Ryan Clemens. Um, we're here for property twenty-six Johnson Street for structural permit for non-conformities, if you go to on the property is a, um, single family home. Um, the proposal is to construct an addition of about six hundred square feet, um, over several levels. Um, the proposal, um, will be added to an addition that was, uh, constructed in two thousand and four. If you go to the historic commission relative to any roof line changes. Um, the property is located in the R two zoning district, um, and the original structure was constructed around eighteen fifty, according to the assessment records. The other information on that, and that would be the front. Um, just to orient yourselves, this will be if you're going down Johnson Street, from High Street, it's towards the lower part of Johnson Street on the right-hand side. So there's a lot of similar homes on that side, uh, but the neighborhood generally is, uh, rather athletic. Um, the property, uh, as I said, we've all constructed in addition to the rear and a little piece on the side where there's the mudroom. In addition, a new garage in the rear, which is conforming to all setbacks and could be done by right, but for special purpose, they're seeking this evening. Um. The property has current non-conformities for, uh, frontage. Um, there's forty-one point eight feet where ninety feet are required. Six point six front yard setback, uh, where twenty feet, five feet are required. Uh, the applicant isn't impacting any of those non-conformities. Then there's a four point four foot setback on the right side, um, where ten is required. We are gonna be extending that a little bit, but not quite, um. We are going to be extending that a little bit, but not quite, um, to the same extent. Um, if you could go to the next. So here's a. Next. And we have the lower elevation, which is the sub- elevation. Um, and you can see some of the additions that were done in two thousand and four. But this, that's the mudroom that's going to be modified with the addition of the rear of it and second story, next. Uh, and then here is the northernly side of the home. Um, and there'll be an addition on the back of that. Should, and then you're going to see how deep this spot is. Uh, next. Uh, and here's the rear, so this is where the rear addition is going to be going on. And there'll be an addition that goes on that, excuse me, where that mudroom is on the right second story plus kind of an infill in the back of that. Mudroom, which Eileen will review next. So, as I said, the proposed project is to, um, add those additions on the rear. Lot is rather large, it's fifteen thousand seven. Square feet is actually comprised of two parcels. Um, so ten thousand feet requires, you can see it's a rather large and deep lot. It goes into the back of the middle school property, that's kind of where it's located. Um, and, um, with that, um, if you can go to the next. So here is the, um, site plan, you can see the top left hand side, you can see where the house is. Uh, and in kind of a peachish color on the back, you can just blow that up a little bit. So you can see the, um, addition on the rear and then the addition on the mudroom on the side. Um, and then you see the garage in the very back of the property, which is tucked in, kind of the L shape in the back. Um, and the next slide, I think what I'm going to do is turn it over to Eileen to review the elevations.
Good evening. I'll start by, um, photographs will be actually pretty good in conveying, uh, where the addition, the two thousand and four addition is. Um, the top three drawings, we, I can point them out as well, so. You know, it's a eighteen thirty's Greek Revival, but. I think it was sort of. It's similar very, and it's lost a lot of detail. But, but nonetheless, its form is still there in person. The two thousand and four addition included. Then, as you can see on the right drawing, the addition towards the back. Two-story gable. Here, top, money, you can see deep. Um, and then going back to the first top, left drawing is, I just want to point out the one-story mud. Now, if we travel down to the bottom two drawings. Bottom right, you can see that the rear addition that we're proposing is basically extruding or extending. That two thousand and four addition, um, by ten feet towards the rear. Um, growing family just needs just that much, you know, a little bit more space, but not a lot. A ten-foot addition towards the rear, and then on the left side. You can see that second story level above the mudroom. And then we go to the next slide, we can see the, the two elevations. Great, and so likewise, if you look at the two left drawings, existing above and below. Very hard to see a difference because it's essentially that family, that rear addition, um, was there. Um, and coming back to the rear. Or minor, but. Change that you do notice is the second story button. And then if you go to the right bottom or. Here, you can see that ten-foot addition going towards the left of the drawing and towards the rear. And then, and as already mentioned, you know, with this addition, we're adding just shy of six hundred square feet. Minimal, minimal in, in square footage, um, in addition, but. Um, and then also part of this design, um, variation is the introduction of the, the pre-standing garage, so that's in the rear. On the next. Which will provide, uh. Both, both Tim and Liz, uh, work on homes, so this was allowing some space. And giving some space for cars and bike storage, et cetera, you know, the yard stuff. And the, the, with this. Really, as you saw from the site plan, it's a big lot. It's quite lovely lot. In that it just sort of opens up there. And so our goal was to, to keep it towards the right side to help preserve that big view that they currently have. To the backyard, again, as, as Lisa has mentioned, it abuts the, uh. School property, so there's all this open space back there, um, so they would like to just maintain that openness, um, that currently is. Still there. Um, and then if I could just type briefly on materials, really, we're just extending the similar. Windows, uh, two, uh, we have flabred siding, um, to match, and likewise, our technical shingles, the mattress is existing. And, um, and similar in this structure here, and in, in this pre-standing structure, we were taking opportunity to just bring a little bit more detail to it. They will be looking back onto it, um. Daily basis, we just wanted something. Interest, uh, vision. So with that, subject Lisa to continue.
Thank you, Eileen. Uh, and so as the board notes under section nine, the test for special permit on form uses whether or not there is any new non-conformities and whatnot. Um, the proposal is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And here, there are no new non-conformities. Um, as we've shown on the plan, and as I've explained, uh, the right side, uh, non-conformity is going to be extended a little bit, ten feet to the rear. But at four-nine and not four-four, which is what the current non-conformity is, so we will be extending that. Uh, the garage, of course, meets all the setback requirements, um, even with the garage and the addition. Uh, the open space goes from eighty-six point one percent to seventy point two percent, which is far above the. Forty percent minimum, and lot coverage goes from seven point one percent to twelve point nine percent, where twenty-five percent is the maximum. That gives you an idea of the size of the lot, certainly, um, as compared to the proposed additions. Um, so we're not creating any new non-conformities, and we're certainly complying with the other, um. The other requirements in the dimensional table. The second is whether or not the proposal is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing. Up here, the lot is rather large, uh, the existing structure is two thousand three hundred and fifty-four square feet. And we're adding ninety-six square feet over, um, three levels, two, over two levels. Uh, the addition. Two hundred and fifty square feet, that's both the addition on the rear and the addition on the mudroom, so. The footprint of the additions are quite small, as Eileen indicated, so the proposed square footage ends up being two thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, we believe the addition, as Eileen explained, uh, blends in seamlessly with the two thousand and four addition on the rear of the structure. Property remains a single-family home. Uh, other structures and lots in the neighborhood consist of an eclectic mix of traditional New England-style structures, which we're going to show you in a minute. Including mid-to-late twentieth-century buildings and all different sizes and shapes of all different lots. Uh, several of the properties on Johnson Street, including the properties, immediate neighbors are both large homes at the front of the property and kind of long, narrow lots. Um, the houses all extend to the rear, all of those in that area extend to the rear, forward space in the rear of their homes for the. The use of a single-family home. Uh, again, we also think that the proposal and the property itself, um, is consistent with the other historic styles in the neighborhood. Of those that are historic, because again, there is an eclectic mix of styles in the neighborhood. If you go to the next. So, excuse me, so here's a mine maps, and I'm going to show you all these houses, quickly, we can go through the photos, but. Um, down at the bottom left, in the, um, the green in that yellow box, those are the two parcels. So you can see how deep this parcel is, um, and so you'll see basically that the, the house is being extended. In the front parcel, and the, and the garage would be a little bit behind that, but then they also found that parcel right behind, so they merged, obviously, presenting purposes. And their lots, or the lot is treated as one, so it's a rather, a large parcel. Um, if you go to the next slide, please, so starting up, uh, at the top of High Street on the opposite side. Uh, the top of Johnson Street at High Street on the opposite side, so here's two oh nine High Street, uh, which used to be, um, the moral inn. Um, and then you go to the next slide, please, so obviously, that's antique, and then we have two Johnson Street at the top on the right-hand side. And I just want to show you the flavor of different homes on the street, next slide, please. Uh, four Johnson Street, and as you'll notice, we get down towards the bottom of Johnson Street, the styles start to get a little more similar to the. To the applicants coming with the. Next slide, please. Uh, six Johnson Streets, so these two houses are similar, next, next slide, please, to each other. Then we have eight Johnson Streets, and we start to see a little more detail and larger second-story houses, two-story houses, next slide. There's ten Johnson Street, and continue on down the street. Nineteen, so this is the opposite side, this is that set of condos that were built in the eighties. Um, so it's kind of a mid-century style, I guess, we call it, I'm not really sure what they are. Um, but they're on the opposite side of Johnson Street, this is, these are behind, uh. Next slide, please. And this is twenty-one, so there's this whole set of these condos. And this is twenty-three Johnson, so this goes, this is beyond the condos, but this house obviously has been renovated and changed, next slide, please. And here's twenty Johnson. Johnson, the Johnson side of the street, um, which has had renovations done to it as well. And here's twenty-five B, so this again is on the opposite side, it's a newer house, number of different qualifications to it, next. And here's twenty-two Johnson, so we're getting closer to the Johnson's house. Next. And twenty-four Johnson, so this is the neighbor right next door, you can see those two houses together there. Twenty-seven Johnson, so on the other side of Johnson Street, we have these, these little ranches that exist. Um, but some of them have been expanded as well, so, next slide, please. And here's again, twenty-eight Johnson, so this is on the opposite side of six, next slide, please. And here's twenty-nine Johnson, so here's one of the ranches that have been revised and tried. And we're back on our side of the street, which is entirely a different structure, um, and design, next slide, please, now we're getting down to the bottom of Johnson's. So as you can see, there, there is an eclectic mix of style, the neighborhood. Uh, this style will be consistent with the home that it is and the architectural style that it is. Um, we believe that there aren't really any other alternatives, certainly, this isn't, uh, an application for sixteen, nobody wants to make this a two-family, it continues to be. Single-family home, and we believe we've complied with the scale-massing and design requirements of the ordinance. And that the board can find that the proposed renovations are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and that has to be taken. When we have neighborhood letters, excuse me, um, Mr. Chair, so we have, um, three immediate neighbors, although there are four letters, there are two members of one household that sign letters, so. Three immediate neighbors that, um, we provided letters to, and those folks who own twenty-eight Johnson Street, uh, did not give us a letter, but. The Johnsons did speak to them, they're very busy, um, folks, and they had no objection, but they have.
Thank you, Attorney Neil. So, we see if there's made public comment from anybody in the room who might like to. Seeing no hand raised, uh, we go to our hotline representative person. She'd like to make a comment. It's my hand, but. And we don't see a hand being raised. So that gets us to questions from the board, who would like to begin questioning from the court?
I'll go. With the, uh, the little extrusion on the, um, on the, I guess, the low street side. That's getting, that's getting longer. That's the, that little box is going toward the.
It's going back and it's giving a second story.
Yeah.
If you can, so there it is, on the side, bottom right-hand side, you see the little roof over the. Tree, and then you see the second floor, and that's a flat roof with the three windows.
Okay, and then, uh, other question, in the, in the yard, are there a whole bunch of trees coming down, or how's, how's that?
So, well, certainly not for the addition, because it's only ten feet off.
Sure, if there is one tree, then we have to, in order for that driveway to. We tried, we tried.
Yeah.
Used to place it.
That's the, the big star in the middle of the pavement, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only one? Uh, that's all, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Alau. Want to go first?
I think, I think you mentioned in the. Discussion that the starting size of the house is twenty-three fifty, it goes to twenty-nine fifty, does that sound right?
Uh, it's five hundred and ninety-six, and here we go, it's twenty-three fifty-four, goes to twenty-nine fifty.
Okay, and the only reason I ask is when I look at the maps, the, uh. The city has it, it's only twenty-one hundred square feet.
Well. I need to do the measurements, so, well, yeah.
Okay. I believe in it.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing was, I noticed the, uh. Side yard setback where the driveway is going to be is eleven feet, which is really, really tight for a drive. Guess in the south end, we have even smaller.
I was just reading. That's a lot.
Yeah.
You can almost pass two cars.
Well, we, we park dozens of cars at eleven feet. Uh, I have no other questions, thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was a thorough presentation.
I, I have a question, but it's, it's not a judgment, it, it's just, uh. The. They're saying that there's no new, new, uh, non-conformities, but in the presentation, it showed that some of the non-conformities were larger. Maybe just by feet, but does that make them new, or it's not? Okay, just clarification.
I did not notice one in test.
We're extending, so we're not at the same rate, so on the right side setback. It's currently four-four. The addition's going back ten feet, but it's four-nine, so it's not at the same intensity. So, you can see the four. And the addition at the back, the very back's four-nine. So, it's extending it, but it's not a new non-conformity, Mr. Janta, a new non-conformity would be a meeting of variance.
Yes.
Right, so we're not doing anything that doesn't work, exists.
It's just a terminology.
Yeah, it's the, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to add to that, the, because it took me a while to get a handle on these terms. She hardly described what a new non-conformity is. Then there's the, uh, intensification, which would be like if you were at, you know, four-four, and you went to three-four. In the intensified, well, not intensified. Then there's extending, if you were at four-nine and you just. Put the wall down along the sides, put four-nine, and just extend all the way back to. Fifty feet or whatever, you'd be extending it, so those are the three terms we use. Oh, and there's upward extension, too. If you're at four-nine and you go put a second story, you're extending, so. And it's, you know, the only one that trips, trips the variance is the first, it's a new non-conformity, but. The board has in the past objected to, uh, intensifications or extensions, depending on the house. Has to do with how parts. Anyway.
Thank, thank you for the clarification, no.
I, I was gonna ask about the square footage. The, uh, I just want to say, I appreciate when you did a comparison to the neighborhood, you put yellow dots around every house on the street, and we looked at those rather than cherry-picking. I think that's far more. So with that, we move to, um, deliberations. Um, who would like to indicate whether this, how this fits with the two-pronged test, and whether you can support this special? Stop.
Stop. Yeah. Patientary will have, we're getting a non-conformities. Motive analysis, whether. The addition. Potential detrimental to the neighborhood. Passing, Mr. Park, petition this evening. Assistant with the neighborhood. And neighborhood in terms of.
Thank you.
Well, that's, I agree with Mr. Medic in all respects, and I, I. I can see the patient.
Thank you. I'll go. Agree with everything that's been stated, thanks.
Great, I support.
And I, I'll thank you for the well-stated, all right. So with that, we need a motion.
I will move that.
Barbara, this for twice. I'm sorry. Oh. Yes, we will learn this in special condition. Thank you for learning. May I just ask which, which of one?
Officer Attorney Mate, are you familiar with this?
Yes, that's fine. We're fine with it.
Accept that.
Yes.
You modify your, uh.
I'll give it another. I will move the, uh. Special permit for non-conformities for twenty-six. Johnson Street with approved. Conditioned upon, except. The special conditions, all of them. Only a separate living space. Should not be used. As provided for. For.
Okay, before we second it, are you comfortable with that?
You still second? Sorry.
Alright, so we go to a vote.
Wow, yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And I also vote against, so if unanimous, approved.
Thank you, Colonel.
Alright, that gets us to the end of our. Uh, we now, as usual, we. People have had a chance to see. Are there any suggested changes or comments? I have one, but I can't find it now. It was just a. An act of a phrase change. I can't find it. I just reread the whole. My final Saturday. Other than, no. Would you like to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that's submitted. For a second.
That's it.
On favor?
I.
Oh, big minutes, too.
Yeah.
It's huge. Well, once. Clear to the law, alright?
Yeah.
Have anything that I? Need to share? At the next meeting, by the way. The next two days are kind of significant. The July ninth meeting, we have the, the gas station project coming in. Is, you know, we don't usually get to. What wants to have such an impact. Um, and, um, and the meeting after that, we have two, the, the continued ones. One's already been controversial the other night, so. The two significant meetings. I am helping, I'm. Two hours to the north in here. And I will be zoomed in remotely on those meetings. Wish I could. Well, Rob will be your chair, and if he isn't, I'm going to see it. Mr. Miles, somebody else would like to chair, because I try it once remotely.
Chair.
It's not, it does. I guess we will move to, uh, adjourn. Somebody would like to make a motion for them. To vote on favor? Thank you.